I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes, additions to the agenda as of right?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to motion my Sean Ryan, but Amy Jerk to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, the agenda's approved. First thing on the agenda, Jim, I think you're going to do an introduction to our new police officer.
Honorable Mayor and Council, tonight we have present with us Officer Tammy Borghike. She was hired July 5th for her appointment, and she's been going through field training the last few weeks. And tonight I just wanted to have her sworn in by the mayor at this council meeting. Tammy comes with us, comes to us with about 10 years of experience. Last five years was with the Scott County Sheriff's Office as a deputy, and prior to that she worked in western Minnesota with another county, and also a couple PDs prior to that. I'd like to introduce to you Tammy Borghike.
Tammy, can you come over here, please? Okay, if you want to just raise your right hand. Aye, Tammy Borghike.
Aye, Tammy Borghike.
On my honor.
On my honor.
Will never betray my badge.
Will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character or the public trust.
My character or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for my actions.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for my actions.
I will uphold the United States Constitution.
I will uphold the United States Constitution.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota and its laws.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota and its laws.
I will uphold the ordinances of the City of New Prague.
I will uphold the ordinances of the City of New Prague.
And faithfully serve my agency and community to the best of my abilities.
And faithfully serve my agency and my community to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Thank you. He was on his way walking with Sean.
I may be slow, no. Oh, okay. I may be slow, but I'm not that slow.
Well, welcome Tammy. We know you're going to do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, number two, adoption of the opt-in-out. Ken?
Yeah, the council will remember at the August 3rd city council meeting we had an introduction on the, what we're calling the opt-out of the temporary family healthcare dwelling law. And a little more background on that, just for the audience watching at home, is that on May 12th, the state did adopt legislation that would allow residential landowners to place a temporary residential dwelling unit on their property to house a, so we got a physical impairment or a mental impairment. Basically, it was intended initially for seniors, but could include anybody with obviously mental and physical disabilities as well. The plan and commission did hold a public hearing at their meeting in July, and we did not have any public comment at that time. So the city council did hold the first reading and introduction of this ordinance at their meeting on August 1st. And tonight, simply we're looking for second reading and adoption of this ordinance that is titled, An Ordinance Opting Out of the Requirements of Minnesota Statutes 462.3593, which would opt us out of that temporary family housing ordinance that the state has implemented. In order to get this in effect, we had to do this by September 1st, and we will be publishing in the New Prague Times on August 25th and meet the deadline by August 1st. Everything will be taken care of. And as I noted before, every city in Scott County, I believe, is opting out or has opted out at this point. So we're, and no different from any other city.
Okay. Mike, does this have to be a roll call vote?
No.
Okay. Any questions for Ken on the opt-out ordinance that we're going to put in effect? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to, for the second reading of the opt-in-out of Requirements of Minnesota Statutes Section 462-3593.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusich. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes by zero. Good. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Next, Mike, I think you're going to introduce.
I'll introduce our speaker. We have with us tonight, she was at an earlier council meeting, and she's back into double duty. We had one of our partners in crime at the EDA meeting. And so we have with us tonight Chelsea Alger, the Resource Development Officer for the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. We reviewed all the materials that are in your packet this evening with the EDA at their meeting that was held on August 10th, which was just last week. And they have ultimately recommended approval to you on a four to one vote. One issue that we'll talk about later when she gets done going through the materials was that I am the council member, Ryan, had expressed a concern on with the EDA. So we'll note that later on. But what we've asked Chelsea to do this evening is to briefly walk through in kind of an executive format on most documents, those that we think need to spend a little more time on some of the policy pieces to provide a little greater clarification, we'll do so. Many of these documents are required to be adopted by the State of Minnesota through deed in the Small Cities Program if we are to participate. So you really don't have a lot of choice whether you adopt what's in front of you tonight really at all. But if we want to participate and get their approval for funding of the program and the use of the monies that we have, we essentially have to adopt what's in front of you here this evening. So with that, I'm going to let Chelsea begin to walk you through the documents here. We've tried to identify them alphabetically so that we could at least, if we had discussion, try to at least get everybody on the same document page. And so we'll do our best to try to walk you through and let her do that with you. The intent is to ultimately adopt at the end of the meeting, adopt all of the policy program documents, as well as the resolution that's in there that's required to be adopted, kind of in one big fell swoop action item for the most part, unless you would prefer to individually opt on them. And I'll leave that choice up to all of you to decide how you want to go through that. But collectively, EDA did that all at one time. And so I will turn it over to Chelsea. We did the pre-op process. I don't know if you were going to touch on that, but I'll let you pick up on that. Although you weren't at that, Lisa handled that. Lisa Grafantine handled the meeting that night.
She did the meeting, yes.
And so we had a good turnout. We had 25 to 30 business and community people that were there for that meeting. And so we have the results of the pre-op process here that we'll briefly review with you. And so I'll let Chelsea start that. I need to go take a call that our next agenda item under number five has called in. So I need to go see where we're at for that agenda item.
Yeah.
I'll be right back, but let me turn it over to Chelsea.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council for having me again. It's nice to see you. I'm just going to provide a brief overview of the feedback that the city received through the pre-application process. As you recall, we, after the last meeting, we had sent out, held the meeting and sent out the pre-applications to get feedback from the property owners in the target area to ensure that the needs of the property owners were in line with the program parameters that were adopted. Twenty-nine applications were received back with a total of 73 properties. That's about a 40 percent return, which is really great. You've targeted six commercial and four rental projects for a total of $300,000 with this program. So I would say we'll probably have a good chance that the money will be utilized and potentially want to look at a future application if you get additional applications beyond that. We know just based on history that not everyone who submits a pre-application will apply for a final application. Even those who apply for final apps won't necessarily go through with projects, but certainly this is a good sign. Some of the numbers provided within the spreadsheet that's also in your packet, the most common identified needs were exterior improvements, windows and doors, and then roof improvements. The average market value of the properties that submitted pre-applications was just over $216,000, and those who applied indicated a total of about 180 employees within those businesses. From the residential side, I believe there was 12 applications that were, that had identified residential units, and then four of those who actually filled out the additional residential information. Is there any questions on that? And then I'll just kind of go through each of the forms all at once. Stop me if you have any questions. Do you have a preference, Mr. Mayor, whether you would like to adopt everything at once, or would you like me to stop each time?
I think we'll probably do one big.
Okay.
Approval.
All right. And you have this outline in your packet as well, so I'll try and be brief as I go through these. And again, please, stop me if you have any questions. I will point out ahead of time, this is not my wheelhouse of the program. Michelle is the one who deals primarily with the administration. She unfortunately had an unanticipated medical leave to take, which she said was okay to share with you. So if you have questions, I will do my best to answer them. If I don't know the answer, I certainly will ask and get back to you, as she has spent countless hours administering this program. The first two attachments, the commercial rehabilitation and the housing rehabilitation fact sheet are just an overview of the program that will be included in the application packets that go out to those wishing to apply for final applications. So it goes through kind of how the program works, who's eligible, some of the improvements. With the residential one, it goes through the income limits and the fair market rents as well. The next attachment is the drug-free work policy that states the city will be a drug-free workplace specific to this program, which you probably already are anyway. But again, as Mike pointed out previously, some of these, or most of these attachments are required to be signed and filed as part of deed and HUD requirements. The third one would be the fair housing policy, stating the city would not discriminate against any applicant. And each year, there needs to be an activity done with this that the partnership would take care of for you. It may be hanging posters at City Hall or providing pamphlets or other information to the public within City Hall or at an event you may hold. The loan repayment and program income plan, this states how the funds could be repaid to the city, and it defines program income and local funds, and how those would need to be utilized.
In the case, Chelsea, if I can.
Sure.
...see here is that when you take a look at the loan repayment, on the commercial program, 40% of that is a five-year forgivable loan. So there would be no repayment. We would forgive 20% of that each year for the first five years, as long as they're there. Then we have the 10-year loan repayment of 40% at a 2% interest rate. So that's really the only program that might and will be coming back to us, is 40% of the cost of the program that we provide and make available under the loan program, because then the remaining 20% is an owner equity contribution into the project. So there's just 40% of that project that could come back under the loan repayment, under the commercial program. On the commercial rental rehab, if there's rental property up above a commercial establishment, that's a 70% five-year forgivable loan. Then there's a 30% owner equity in there. So there is no repayment on the rental piece from a housing standpoint, once the five years is met in that part of the program. So the only program income is the 10-year 2% low interest loan on the commercial properties.
The next attachment is the prohibition of excessive force, and this wordage shows, or indicates the city will not use excessive force in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. Again, another HUD requirement. The Section 3 requirement, this is a policy required by HUD, that they have a certain level of Section 3 contractors, which would be those who are low-income, or very low-income, or have employees that would fit that, and also includes women and minority-owned contractors. As your information points out, deed is currently meeting this level, so it's not required that a Section 3 contractor bid on the project, only that the city provide the opportunity for these contractors to, or encourage the contractors to apply. So in order to fulfill the requirement of this particular policy, you would need to document within the minutes the following statement that I'm going to make in regards to the policy, that the City of New Prague, through the Small Cities Development Program Income Project, will to the greatest extent feasible market to low, very low-income persons or businesses and female or minority-owned contractors. And then you have that policy after that.
And that's to the extent feasible.
Right. The residential anti-displacement, this states that we aren't anticipating any displacement that would occur as a result of any projects, particularly with the residential. But if there would be, that the city or our partnership would help find contact information for other rental units or housing during that time. It does not obligate the city financially to pay for any of this, only that we will assist in helping them find somewhere.
It's our responsibility to attempt to, again, to mitigate the adverse impacts of the displacement load-modern component process.
The next two attachments, the commercial rehabilitation program procedural guidelines and the residential rental rehabilitation program procedural guidelines are really the step-by-step process of the federal objective. The program administration really walks you through how someone would apply and the process that goes through those. They are substantially similar in format, just the differences, whether you're dealing with the commercial and then the residential, because the residential brings in the income and fair market requirements with that. Talks about, again, the eligible improvements, and then it incorporates several, by reference, several of the items that we have just discussed previously. The next would be the general contract between the city and Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership for administration of the program. It talks about the budget and the work program. Again, budget including four rental units at a total cost of $64,000 and six commercial units at $270,000. Now, if you were to get several commercial applications and the residential was not going very quickly, and the city decided they wanted to maybe reallocate some of that residential funding to commercial or vice versa, you certainly could do that. We would probably bring that back to you for approval to ensure that that was okay, since this is the way the program has been set up. But just because it's adopted this way doesn't mean you're restricted to six and four, if you're seeing the need come in differently as the applications come in.
And I'll interject here as well, that in the discussion between our staff and the Housing Partnership staff, is based on their general experience, on typically what is done in a commercial rehab or in the rental rehabilitation, is taking a look at, you know, the average cost on a project cost, and either one of those programs is based on the dollars we had available, about what kind of work could we get done. And as she indicated, is that we would in all likelihood have to do a project amendment if nobody did any of the rental rehab up above the buildings, and we wanted to use any commercial, we'd have to come back and amend for that. Or in some cases, depending on the size and the scope of the rehab work done by a commercial project, we could end up with a number of smaller projects and do more projects than six. So that's just a general goal and an outline as to what we've conveyed to deed, or will be conveyed to deed, that we're attempting to do based on their best estimate of the average cost to do these kinds of things.
The last form then would be the authorization form, just the council authorizing the partnership to approve each applicant per program policies. So we would be doing that for you.
It should be pointed out here is that all of the program application materials that will be generated will be sent to the Housing Partnership. They will be maintaining the complete files on all the application materials, because there's some private data as part of this that gets collected. And so as we work with them and as we deal with them, we will kind of know them. I think the way Michelle indicated, it was either project 1, 2, 3, 4, or whatever, that we're dealing with that. I mean, ultimately, we'll know what projects are being done where, but for most purposes, from an informational standpoint, we'll be dealing with them fairly independently of knowing their individual names until they get them qualified and put together properly to satisfy all the state
The last item then would be the resolution identifying the target area as a slum and blight district. I know we talked about this last time, that these terms substandard and slum and blight are terms outlined and defined by HUD that need to be incorporated into the documents, but often are just much more severe sounding than the actual rehab needs of the building. So how we determine this, or how this information was determined was twofold. We had a project manager do a windshield survey, and then a lot of the feedback was provided through the pre-applications too. And we are seeing a lot of similarities between the two. So I think we had in the upper 30%, which actually, the minimum is 25%. And it's good to have a little bit of cushion there in case you have some of these projects come in, and then you want to apply for funds in the future. You would still have enough properties that you probably would not risk falling below that 25% for a next application if you wanted to go forward with that.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have any questions? I know Sean and I kind of went through it more in detail with Michelle at the EDA meeting. So if anyone else has any questions?
I have a, um, in your past experience, Chelsea, for business owners, once they're done with this process, what is the feedback you get back? Are they, did they say, was it cumbersome? Or you guys really helped them walk through it? Or, I'm just sort of wondering what the past feedback has been on these programs?
You know, we haven't done, most of what we've done, I would say, is probably on the residential end of things. Commercial, just by nature, because of the additional requirements. And a lot of, a lot of communities don't get the interest back to pursue commercial properties, or commercial projects, that I would say, I'm not sure what kind of feedback Michelle has gotten. I don't, I don't know is the short answer, but I would guess that her feedback is probably minimal, just based on the fact that most of the small cities' projects are typically in residential in nature.
Amy, I can try to provide a response based on the fact that we did 2 million-plus grant projects in Marshall, and so I worked with a number of businesses and residential properties in that process, that as they say, when we come to the table with these monies, there is no such thing as free money. So there are rules and requirements and restrictions that apply as far as eligible items, ineligible items, the historic review, the walkthroughs, the getting the bids, the putting together the contracts. All of it's done with property owner involvement through all facets or steps of the process. So from that standpoint, there's nothing that is done that causes them any blindness as to why or what's going on. They're walked through each of the various steps all the way through to the point before they sign on the contract that they're ready to go and actually do the project. We can actually do inspections of properties, do a work write-up as to what needs to be done, get bids on it, and they could still choose not to go forward at that stage of the game so they have the abilities to go through that. The first time we did it, as with anything, garnering that interest to begin with, was slow with the very first program that I did in Marshall. But by the time we got done, I had people wanting to get out of the list, and well, you know, I waited too long. I didn't take enough interest to begin with. And so we did a second round. And so between the 2 million-plus grants that we got, plus the private equity investment on the commercial, the residential side, I think we ended up with in excess of $3 million in overall capital investment and improvements in our downtown in Marshall. And so there was very positive business acceptance of the program, because when you take a look at it, they're getting 40% of the monies free. If you stay there for five years, 40% of that at a 2% low-interest loan, and only having to put in 20% equity upfront, when you sit down and weigh that out, depending upon the scope and the magnitude of the improvements that you're undertaking, whether that's $10,000, $15,000, $25,000, or even $30,000, and you break those component pieces up, that's a lot of help coming to the table to assist in that long-term preservation of that asset that they're attempting to generate income, hopefully grow in asset value, so that someday when they're able to sell that, that they can get the return on that investment. So we had great success in answering that question. But, but nothing is free in life. There are rules and regulations and policies that come with in order to access those funds.
And now through this process with administration, I'm assuming that that's what you, as you administer the program, you walk through the owner's wish, so there's no surprises?
Right. And with Michelle, I remember Michelle was talking that, I mean, they really go through every step with the owner. And the owner at any time can say, no, I'm done, or go through the whole process, until they sign their name on the dotted line, they can back out. She's been very successful, talking to Michelle. I don't know how many programs she's done, but.
She's had over 60 programs in her seven years.
Okay.
So she's had.
One of the facets that we find as we get to the stage after the applications are determined and they're qualified, and they bring in the inspector to take a look at the technical walkthroughs and the things that are necessary, that there are some items that are required to meet code violations or building code requirements, and so those kind of things. If they choose to move forward and we don't do anything, we don't hold that report against them, that because they don't do anything under the program, that the building department's going to walk in and require them to do that. We don't see any of that until it comes forward and an actual building project is actually undertaken. But the process of developing the list for bidding purposes, soliciting the bids, and then having to ship that application with information up to the state from the historical review standpoint, sometimes it can take longer than people want. And so if there was anything that I specifically recall out of the program, was the delays in going through that part of the program and running things through the state of Minnesota, which we can't control. And so based on the level of work activity up at the state of Minnesota, getting those things through to the review, because we couldn't actually undertake the work until we got that final sign-off from the state Historical Society. And so that sometimes can be longer than people want and/or expect.
And isn't it true, after we adopt today, it's still has to get approval from some state organization before it actually goes, gets implemented?
Yeah, we've got an environmental review piece that's out there right now for a period of.
Thirty days.
Is it 30? I wasn't, I think it was quite that long.
No, I think it is 30.
So, maybe I think of another one that was about 17 days. But yeah, before we can actually release the documents and all that for the advertising, we'll have to submit all of this paperwork up to the state of Minnesota through their office, and then wait for the other pieces to get done to formally start the program.
They have been provided the program overview and did indicate that they They have been provided the program overview and, and did indicate that they were in agreement with it, so we don't anticipate any concerns with that.
When would you expect the program to actually start?
I think we're anticipating the middle of September for applications to start being accepted.
Any other questions?
I have just a couple. So accessibility is one of the high priorities in here. And are you seeing people coming forward with wanting to address that or are we encouraging them to do accessibility?
So that would be one thing that they would have to address in a project if they, if they had accessibility issues, but they wanted to address A, B, and C. They could address A, B, and C, but they'd also have to address that. And we did get a few applications back that indicated they needed to address that specifically. There may be more out there that just aren't aware and, and didn't indicate that on their application.
But I think Ken would tell you that it depends on the level and the type of the building improvements that are undertaken that sometimes on an older facility that dictates when that accessibility issue has to be dealt with and how it has to be dealt with.
Sure.
So it's one of the targeted goals of that, but we still have to comply with the Minnesota building code as well.
Old buildings don't always, pardon. The old buildings don't always let you wind the door.
Well, as an example, I'm not certain if, and I don't want to pick on them, but let's just say we were dealing with a newspaper building that there's not a lot of public right of way there to try to deal with the steepest of the steps in there as to how we would deal with that accessibility. And so I don't know that they are or would be an applicant, but it's a challenge to try to deal with accessibility in those cases.
Sure, Patrick's going to put that in the newspaper.
No, it won't because you get drunk.
My other question more to probably Ken then, so these would all be inspections that would be done through the city?
Not our own inspector. We would, we would do inspections through the normal building permit process, but no, they have an inspector that would assist these people and go through specifically, you know, what, again, what needs to be done code-wise and then their wants and desires.
So if they go through with it, is it then additional work for your staff or not?
Just, you know, your typical building permits, which may have not happened previously.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're only talking, you know, potentially approximately 10 projects overall, so it's not significant. But yeah, it's-
I just know basically it's full, so I was going to say how does 10 more fit in, but it's okay.
I mean, we will certainly take a look at that as we go through budget process, as with anything else.
But under the contract that we have with the housing partnership is that they help undertake the initial inspection, they help do the write-up, they assist the owner in soliciting the bids, they assist in the contract award, and then they provide periodic inspections during the construction along with bringing the property owner along to ensure that there's satisfaction. And before any project gets closed out, it gets signed off on by the contractor, the applicant, and the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. So they work very hard to ensure that what's been identified and bid to get done actually gets done, is properly paid for. We have all the lien waivers and all the close-up materials so that we don't leave that property owner with any issues hanging that could come back and cause them problems later on.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Do we want to address the issues that Sean brought up?
Yeah, I can acknowledge it that-
Why don't I do it, Mike? I can explain it real quick. It's, I like this program overall. EDA member Nick Slawick had made a good point at the end of the discussion here when, when Chelsea's coworker, Michelle, was explaining that there was the possibility we could add additional rules. And one of the, one of the things that Nick brought up is because we had 29 individual people applying and there's only going to be six commercial, there are people, or there are commercial building owners and business owners that have multiple properties. Nick's point was is that, and it's really on a first come, first served basis on who gets their application in first. And I thought he made a valid point because theoretically, since there's only six, six potential applications that are, projects that are going to be done, one building or business owner that owns multiple places could get all six of those projects. And he said that's, you know, is that right? Is that fair? Or should we try to include as many businesses, business owners and building owners as possible and perhaps limit it to one or three or something so we could spread it out and not have just one or two individuals take all those dollars? In that discussion, I thought that made a lot of sense. It wasn't that I was against it because I do like this program, but, and I want to use those federal dollars. But I just wanted to know in that instance, just so the other business owners, if that were to happen, the other business owners would know that it was discussed and that there was, that I had fought for them to, to maybe put a rule like that in place. But I'm going to vote for yes on this tonight because it's a great program, but that was really why the no vote was cast at the EDA meeting.
And so do we have that rule?
We do not have that rule right now as it stands. And Mike can now probably address that a little bit better.
Well, we kind of talked about at the EDA that-
How it's written to ensure that we don't develop something that is discriminatory the other way would require the city attorney to take it adding, developing some language that the housing partnership does not typically do that as part of their program. And so that's why it's not in here, other than it's on a first come, first served basis based on the submittal of completed applications. The reverse side of Councilmember Ryan's concern from the perspective of the individual that might own more than one building is that if I do all of my paperwork and I submit all of my paperwork on a timely basis and I happen to get all of them in there at, at the beginning and others wait or dilly-dally around, then you're discriminating against me by putting a limitation. What's the likelihood, you know, as, as you look at the numbers that Councilmember Ryan is adequate, is we have a small number here and as we recall, as you recall from the discussion we've had from the very beginning, is we have a very small pot of money that we're trying to get something off the ground and do. If we're successful with it, then we believe based on the individuals that we had out from the State Department of Employment and Economic Development, that we may be able to go back after some of the other monies that we have through the Minnesota Investment Fund Program and see if we can't get them converted from myth monies to actual small cities' monies at a later date. There is no guarantee in that process, but we think we could make a strong case for better utilization of those dollars under this program than leaving them sit there for some other type of economic development processes. So is there a way to guarantee that, and in this case, I think we have primarily one individual, that besides owning a commercial rental and/or another commercial project, there are very limited numbers of individuals that would qualify under that restriction? But is there any way to guarantee that that can't happen? And the answer is no. And so as you take a look at that, I think the issue Sean wrestled with was, you know, do, do we attempt to try to put some, place some restrictions in there to ensure that more than one individual is able to apply for all the dollars? We don't know that he would and have everything all done and be at the front, at the forefront of the, the project any more than anyone else. That the release of the material will be done as simultaneously as possible, that they will be mailed out to all of those individuals that submitted a pre-application. And so attempting to judge that to the best of our abilities, we would also in the pre-advertising, make available packets here at City Hall for pickup so that we hit the timing that they would get to the individual's mailbox at the same time that we would make them available here at City Hall by trying to balance that out as best as we can. Does it automatically and totally guarantee that it couldn't all go to one individual? The answer is no. Is it likely? I can't tell you that. And so on the other side of it, if they do, they own multiple properties in the downtown. All of the projects are eligible for the same dollars. It's whether you want to attempt to place some restriction on the numbers. And if you do, then what we would need to do is to not adopt all of the program stuff tonight and we would have to have the city attorney develop language to do what it is you would be directing us to try to do, which I did not want. That added time delay and expense, but I just wanted to make the point that I just hope it doesn't go to all one individual and that perhaps more-
But it could also affect other building owners because it isn't at the plat. And if one building's on two plats, then how do you do that? I mean, we talked about that at the EDA also, that it might restrict someone who has one building, but he has-
Over parcel lines, yes.
Yeah, parcelizer. So it's separated two parcel lines. So is he considered one building? No, it's two buildings and type of thing. So, you know, it was good discussion. I think it was, it was, like Sean said, it was needed to kind of, you know, because Nick said, you know, if someone asked him, he just wants to know how, you know?
Yeah, I mean, you can imagine what the other business owners are going to think or say, and it's going to be directed towards us and to the EDA, is why did this one individual get all the, potentially get all the money? And that's, that was kind of the issue that, and Michelle did make a point that she thought that we could add some restrictions in there, and that's where the discussion came about. But anyways, I think it's a great program. I want to utilize those dollars. Hopefully we get many business owners that can all get a little touch of this and then we can move forward and, and hopefully get some of the additional monies that might be available, as Mike just explained.
I'd be a whole lot more comfortable if I had more dollars in the program starting out and if it wasn't just to get our feet at the door and to try to utilize what we have and that's all they're utilizing that is that I'd much rather find ways to, to do that for a small number of businesses in the downtown than ultimately at some point to have to give this money back to the state of Minnesota because we couldn't find a use for it. And so if we're successful in doing it here as quick as we think based on the preliminary interest that we are seeing is that I think we begin at the September EDA meeting to begin to have discussions is how do we begin to put things in motion and put together the program to go back after the redesignation of the dollars and/or determine whether we think we would want to try to solicit anything additional because the process at the state is a competitive process, not on our dollars, but if we wanted to try to expand and to get additional dollars, that there's a competitive side of that in the process. And so what do we want to do in that mix? And so that decision is yet to come, but our goal is hopefully that we get our feet on the ground, we get something started, we have enough interest, we think, and we, we see what begins to happen.
So what is the timeline for looking at future? I mean, we don't have to exhaust this, but I mean, at what point? Is that just for the EDA to design? What are you-
Well, the intent would be that, as we did with this program, that we have discussion at the EDA and try to have them formulate in discussions with the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership staff is what would we see as a conceivable next step with the dollars that we have based on the appearance of the needs that are out there is do we have enough dollars with what we have on hand or should we try to go after the competitive side of the process and add dollars to that and have them provide a recommendation to you? So you would get to review that, have debate and discussion, just like you are having as part of this program to determine what you think you might want to do going forward.
Any other questions or comments?
I have just one. Chelsea, you mentioned that somewhere in Artis' notes, we have to have this one paragraph stated in the relationship through the Small Cities Development Program project rule.
Section three requirement?
Yeah. Do we have to put that in our motion?
No, it just needs to be stated in the minutes. So if, if there's, I'm not sure how your minutes are typically typed, but you probably want to include that within the discussion piece of the, and I can give staff the actual statement that I-
We've already talked about what we need to do, that we will identify the documents that are being adopted. And as we take a look at document G, we will make sure in the minutes with that one specifically is that there was documented, documentation and discussion at the council meeting on that specific language on the back, the actual word is on the backside of that document is we'll make sure that that's fine in the minutes is how we do it.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I guess I would for motion to adopt the program. Who's that?
So.
Motion by Sean Ryan?
Second.
Second by Amy Jurick. There's no other further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Chelsea, thank you again for, for coming in and helping accelerate.
Thank you, everybody.
Next on the agenda, four, I think, Mike, you're going to take this for Glenn?
Yes, I will. One second, we are good to it. The resolution you have in front of you is the resolution that's been prepared that basically accepting the work under the KAWI construction project. We signed the contract back in July 6th of 2015. That work has been completed as of this spring, back in April. And you approved the final payment and we didn't have Oberducks and Row, so we wanted to make sure that we got the attached resolution in front of you, basically accepting the project, acknowledging that the project was constructed as required by the general conditions of the contract. The warranty period is for a period of one year and it ends on April 22nd of 2017. We do that so that if something goes back and questioned, where, where's the timeline? What happens is that we've got a document point and we do this for the street construction projects and the waste yard project and big construction projects so that we know when that period of warranty is so that there isn't any question that when did we accept it and what is the warranty period? So that's what's been recommended to you this evening.
Anyone have any questions?
I just have a couple of comments if I can.
Sure.
I walked down there. I love baseball, so this was a good invite to go check it out. And it looks super fun and cool and excited to see it. Will the second phase or the second year or of the project have some signage in there that says that it's the ball field or memorial ball field? Does it have a name to it? Will it have a sign?
Actually, it will be the third year. This was the second year.
Okay.
The lighting project that we did this year was the second phase of the improvement.
Okay.
So 16, excuse me, 15 was the first year. 16 here was the second year with the lighting. 17 will be the third year. And yes, in the original bid, as we had the lettering that was on the building that talked about just exactly what you're raising due to the pricing and the funding that we had available as we eliminated that at that point, recognizing that we probably have to add it later on and trying to prioritize the types of items. There was a certain amount of work that was done, part of this, that was done with in-kind labor, volunteer labor that we pulled out of the contract or asked for alternative add or deduct, excuse me, deducts if we did some of the labor, the, the painting inside the, the restrooms and some of the other things of that nature, we did to try to help bring the price down. So the lettering and the signage, yes, there will be more to come, probably at a later date.
And my other question, well, the, there's a table, the umbrella on the table that's kind of a spool. That's just temporary, I hope?
Those are all temporary. That in the end, the hope is, is that we will either get all new wooden spools or the ones that we have will have round tops made for them, that they'll be spray painted and we will significantly improve those elements at that point as we get ready for 2018.
And isn't there, was it the classes 70? I can't remember where Jerry Valerius's class is. Are they're going to-
There's a check deck that part of the-
They're going to do the check deck type of thing, which their class is kind of doing the fundraising.
Oh, yeah.
So that's going to kind of be over-
Third base, right?
Yes, down by that pass of doggoes, there where those things are.
Baseball committee had a meeting last week, I believe it was. And what, what we're doing right now is the planning and the discussion for the 2017 improvements. Most of those will generally include additional site work, replacement of the dugouts, the building of the new press box above the first base dugout. All of the fencing will be moved in closer to the field and removed and replaced with the black netting similar to what the Twins have versus the, the metal fencing that we have there at present. There's additional irrigation work that will be done throughout the entire complex because in some cases it's been put in on a phased, different basis. And so there isn't the continuity that we need on the level of coverage so that we can monitor how much water we apply and that we're hitting all the right areas, that we work around different infield spots and possibly in the infield itself. We are not going to, we were looking at it in the third year of completely redoing, re-grading and re-sodding the entire infield and outfield, but we have worked hard this last year and this year in our maintenance program. We were spending upwards of $150,000 to, to redo that. We've been trying to do more on the basis where we, through the slit seeding, through the aeration, through a number of other processes seeding and there's some other terms I'm not thinking. not thinking of, but have been trying to change the level of field maintenance that historically hasn't occurred here in the last forty to fifty years, to try to avoid the ultimate scope of having to completely redo that. And the consensus through this year now, the second year, is that we've made enough progress, that with the work we have yet to do this fall, the work we'll do in seventeen, and then finish up in the spring of eighteen, is we will believe we will have the fuel and the caliber and the condition that we're hoping to bring it to, because when you go from something that, you know, we probably didn't spend more than five to six thousand dollars a year on minimal field maintenance, is that the council has placed a different level of priority on trying to redo this facility and improve this facility, and it's resulted in some fairly significant improvements. But we've tried to do this one in reverse, in a sense of taking a shot at it, that we met, was it back in July, I think, the committee met out at the field, and tried to verify the progress that's been made since last summer, and had we made sufficient progress in not having to redo the outfield and the infield by basically starting from scratch. So we'll do everything but that, in trying to get that prepped and ready to go, along with redoing the irrigation, which we hope will help us as well.
And then my last question or comment, Mike, is just I couldn't help when I looked in, that right when you walk in, there's the light tower. Will that stay? Where is that?
I omitted in my list of improvements, no, that, and I wish I'd have put up a sign there for all the questions that we've had asked this year, is that neither the first, excuse me, neither the first base or the third base light standards are going to remain. We are going to do a single pole that will move in close proximity to both the first base and third base dugouts. As part of that, we will be removing those light standards as impediments, and so all of the things that you would look and think about have been well thought out, but there's a phasing to the process, and they all don't get done at the front end of the project.
Perfect.
Something has to be in the third year or the three years.
Good. Looks great.
But if I had money for all the questions that we got asked about that, I should have put the sign up there, because we knew as soon as we basically did everything, we did and we left that, that, you know, people are going to say that, well, you come right into the entrance of the ballpark, and your first impression is you're looking at this thing through a light standard, so it's, it will be replaced.
Good talking point. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance and start the one-year warranty. Second by Dave Bruchek. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Next, I see our celebrity has arrived. Oh, thank you for coming, Terry. Appreciate it. We have with us tonight, while she's walking to the podium, we have with us Terry Heaton, who is our financial advisor from Springsteen. We've got a couple of projects that we're looking at financing this year. One is the purchase of the golf cart, golf mowers, that you approved back in February, the cost of about $69,000. And then we had the sanitary sewer forcement project, which we're just in the process of completing. That between engineering and construction was about $141,000. We did no street CIP this year. We had no utility reconstruction, so we had a small amount of dollars. And what you're going to hear from Terry tonight is that instead of going out and going through the normal public sales process that we typically do, we are going to be asking you for the authority for essentially the private placement and sale and negotiation with the local financial institution, just because it's a lot more cost effective than it would be trying to do a public bond sale. Typically, the threshold, I think Terry would tell you, is at or above about a million dollars, that it makes sense in doing what we're doing. So this is the first time in recent years that it's been done. And it last was done, if memory serves me correct, is when the city financed the 2006 improvements to the clubhouse at the golf course. That was done as a 15-year issue, and it was a private placement with a state bank, which is the other part of what we're taking a look at here, as we've got five years left on that. And as part of it, we'd also see if we couldn't solicit the possibility of getting the interest rate reduced on that remaining five years of debt, and see if that's at all possible. So I hope with that summary, I haven't stolen all of the materials that she was going to summarize, but essentially that's what we're looking to do tonight, and so I'll let her provide all the other salient details that I would know.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I believe the city administrator did a great job summarizing, so if you have any questions, I'll have you answer.
You're just, you're just a pretty face.
I think he's covered, oh, I wouldn't say that. I was going to say the dark glasses had nothing to do with the movie star. I had to have my eyes dilated at the eye doctor, so. I know, I think it's all been covered, and I think the bottom line is, you know, we look at, as your fiduciary, putting myself in your shoes, what's the best way to sell the bonds? And there are costs. You have to pay for a rating and an official statement. It's part of this if you want to go to the national markets. And when you get up over a million dollars, you really can make up for that in the interest rate, because it's a larger bond size, and the interest dollars are larger. In this particular case, it's a smaller bond issue, and so the way that we can make it most cost effective and get to the lowest rates overall, at lowest cost, is to not do an official statement, not seek the rating this time around, instead packaging to local banks who would, who would take that kind of a transaction and want to hold it in their portfolio. So the process would really be putting together, the term of offering is included in this document, so we're summarizing the things that the bank would need to know, that along with your financial statements would be circulated, and we would probably start with one bank and see if we can negotiate that on your behalf with your instruction. We're not broker dealers, so we'd take the direction on the staff, and we would do a mini-competitive, and come back with the best rates for someone who would take that without all that extra administration. That turns into a loan. You still have to go through the process, and these are legally general obligation bonds for the new money, and legally it's a gross recreation bond, you meet the statute to be able to do it, but instead of a bond that you would place out on the market, we'll actually place them as a loan with those authorities.
Okay. Have we looked at all our other bonds, and there is no option of refinancing anything at this time?
We, we looked at every single one, and refunding them now would cost you money, so I didn't recommend that.
Okay. Any questions for Terry? Estimated interest rate projection is right around two and a half percent, is kind of what your ballpark is.
For the, it's a ten-year term, and we're looking at that, but I was, we'll see, we have to negotiate and see what they come up with in there. It's a, it's a, you know, mini-competitive, so we'll try to get that from the base.
Okay.
Obviously, I'd like to keep it with one of the local banks, but are we required to, to go with local banks if we can find a better rate, or?
This is really your discretion, and so we have, we have talked about going to the state where it's currently, go to the state bank where your loan is currently held, and start with them. And if we can get reasonable terms from them, that may be the end of it. If we're not as satisfied with how that compares to the market, then we would reach out and expand it, and Mr. Johnson has given us the names of the local banks to proceed with.
So we wouldn't notify all of them and see which one, and like in a bidding process like we do when we award, you know, automobile purchases or anything like that?
Yeah, this is a smaller scope, because we really have to target it to folks who will not need an official statement or reading in order to have it in their portfolio. And oftentimes, we can find folks who are more interested in doing that in their local community, because they want your paper, rather than taking out to Wells Fargo, US Bank, and the bigger banks.
No, 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 and I'd like to keep it local, but, you know, there's more than one bank in town. I mean, we can't, it's not a bid process where, where all the banks, local banks realize that, that perhaps-
You have the choice and the discretion. There's not a requirement exactly what we do here. She indicated that we have one placed with the state bank. We have all of our banking at the state bank. I have talked with one of the other three banks, and they were very warm in their interest in that, and I think what she's saying is our intent would be to start with the state bank, and see what kind of response we get. If we don't feel that it's competitive in the marketplace, then we would expand that search with the other three financial institutions, and then do just exactly what you're asking, but probably would not start there.
Okay.
But we can, we will judge and try to take a look at whether there is interest. Terry would tell you that in some cases, for some of them, that we're proposing to do this as tax exempt, are we not? So that's part of it, that there are certain things that the banking world is required to do relative to community donation and that, and that's one of the things that can qualify them as to how, and I don't remember exact terminology in the program, but there's some benefit for them to do things with the local community, the banking world, that they get credit for.
Well, I think the one thing is, this shows up, banks want your investments. They want you to invest your money with them, and they can use that. When it comes to loans, it shows up sometimes as a liability, and they want to offset it with other fees. And so oftentimes, we have better luck if we start with the place who already has your checking account. Some of them will say, we'll do the loan, but then we want all your other business. And we've heard that before. So sometimes we look at where you already are doing business, because they're getting that, and they're more inclined to give you a good rate and work with you already. That would be the one reason to look to where you're doing business now. But certainly, we could start from, you know, go to all banks right away and do this as well. It's, the interest rate differential is not going to be great, because we're not talking about a lot of principal.
And as a reminder, we did bid out all of our consolidation under the leadership and direction of the council. We bid that out a number of years ago. The only interest we had was from the state bank and Wells Fargo, and there were fairly significant costs to continue to a state with Wells Fargo, whereas the state bank did not charge us anything for our banking accounts.
Right.
And the others did not bid. Any other questions?
Are we, are you proposing to have the bank with it as too separate, or is it lump, or see how it works the best?
Mr. Mayor, the, I think that the latter approach is what we would start with. It is a negotiation, it's not a bid, a sealed bid of any type. So I think we would approach the bank and talk to them about the new money, and see if we could package it. That would be the advantage of starting, because there is already a loan. And then again, if we can't get to the rates, then we, then we would have to separate it and see. Probably, if we, if we went to the mini-competitive, we would package it and take the whole thing out to everybody.
Okay. Any other questions?
Terry, how many other cities have you done this with? Is this pretty common, or?
It is.
Through Springsteen, okay. So you have a good, a good feel for what other cities are getting from their, maybe perhaps their local banks? As, you know, even if it's a eight to a point difference, you know, a million dollar loan, over 10 years, I just don't want to leave anything on the table for the taxpayers of New Craig, so. But you do this with other communities, so you feel good about knowing where, obviously, you probably couldn't divulge, well, maybe you could, because it's a public entity, but you've seen enough of these loans, so when you negotiate with state bank here in town, you'll know that it's a good package, or?
We, we not only know if it's a good package among banks, where we start is what you can get with your tax exempt bonding, if you go onto the market, and we actually did a comparison for the city to start with, saying, if we did this in the market, here's what you'd get, here's what we think we've been seeing in our bank loans, and the past differential said that we'd say you would come out overall ahead by doing a loan. And then within that, if you, we do just with one bank, we talk to the first one, we have information about what they've, a lot of them will base it off of a scale, and that's what we'll look at, is how close they are to that scale, and how many of them place close to that. So we have a lot of information about interest rates. We also have a subscription to Bloomberg and other data bases that we use.
Okay.
On the golf, the sanitary sewer issue, you were talking, a total issue of about $228,000 in total, and then the remaining amount on the golf was the 204,300 is what's remaining of the last five years of that loan. So that's a separate independent one already, and all we would attempt to do there is to see if we can get a lower interest rate on the years that are remaining, just as if you would on refinancing your house. We're doing the same thing, to see if we can get that rate lowered in the last five years. So you're not talking a very large bond issue in that respect, and so.
No, I understand. I just want to make sure that we're, that we do get the best, you know, and again, if the bank knows there's only one bidder, the potential for, you know, nicking it up a little bit is there, so.
But in response to that, they typically have bond sales every single day, and know what's out there in the marketplace, and are able to judge that accordingly, to see where we're at in that process.
Sure, and that's why I asked the question. I feel good with Terry's response there, that, I'm sure that we'll get the best rate. I just wanted to make that clear.
We would have helped you if, if we thought the public sale process was the most cost efficient process to have done. We'd have continued to do the same thing that we typically do year in and year out, but we feel through conversation and exploring the differential in the issuance, and when we were talking with the utilities staff, as we were trying to decide how they were going to finance some of the long-term water and electric meters, and the possibility of the electric building expansion project next year, they decided not to come along at this point in time, and would consolidate that next year, which is why you adopted that resolution to reimburse earlier this year to preserve our abilities to finance that at a later date, to have a larger piece, to be more competitive in that process. So again, that's why we're not here on the public sales side. Okay. Any other questions, comments? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the private placement.
So moved.
Second. I get a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Dave Bruchek. Any other further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes by Terry. Thank you, Terry, very much. Next, consent agenda. Anyone have any questions, issues, and any items in the consent agenda? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. There's no comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Okay, miscellaneous. Jim, anything you have to offer?
I do not. We did have our block enforcement last Thursday. It was a very nice turnout. The support was overwhelming from the public. It was a nice event.
Good. Yes, I showed up, and it was a very, a lot of comments from the other officers from different communities, that I was, was just outstanding, and so.
Jim, do you know how many people attended?
I would say they, I believe they served around 700 people. Some people did not keep. So my guess is someplace between 800, maybe just over that.
Yeah, I heard, I figured towards the end that they had served 850.
So, yeah.
I didn't know, you know, if there's an official count.
Um, yeah, they tried to come up with, I heard everything from 625 up to 800 or 850 that they actually served. I was talking with Chef John from Belton, Calgary. But yeah, it was very nice, nice weather, nice event.
Great.
Yes, it was. They raised some money. Each county will split the cash, and then they decided where they're going to put that money towards. I know Sheriff Henon was going to put it towards the homeless fund, and Sheriff Teetz was going to go with the Posse Youth Fund, that they do things with the youth. So it was good, very good.
And then with the food, is that going to the meat center?
Actually, there's four food shelves in each county, and it was going to be divided up for all of them.
Okay, great. Anything else?
Um, no, just working on plans for Dozinki. We'll be meeting with the chamber shortly, make sure we are set for anything that might be coming up, but no, we're just planning for Dozinki now.
Okay, good. Thank you. Ken?
A real quick update. We had the primary election, so the first election we had up at the parish activity center, and I think for the most part, it worked out pretty well. One thing we had, probably the biggest issue was directing people to the north side of the parish activity center building, so we're going to probably bolster our signage a little bit out there for general election day, and should work out just fine. We only used about, you know, maybe a third to a half of the space up there, and we're going to pretty much take up the whole gym for the general election, so we can get everybody in comfortably, in line, and through voting. So I think it'll, it'll work, and maybe it'll turn out to be a long-term location for us. So we'll see how the general goes, and that's a real test. I mean, we had a little over 150 voters in the Scott County precinct, and I think we're just under 80 for LeSueur County, so not a big turnout, but got to tweak the layout a little bit, so it'll, it'll be good.
Okay, good. Ed, do you have anything? Patrick?
I'm fine.
Okay. Young gentleman, do you have anything to say? Are you here?
Are you here for a scouting?
No.
Oh, too bad you didn't let us know. You can let us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for coming. Michael?
Couple items. One in the back of your package is some information that was handed out at the last scale meeting. And it, one is a one-page handout, two-sided, on the current transportation plan that Scott County has adopted. If you recall, with a half, half, I think it was a half cent on sales tax is what was adopted. Yeah, half a percent, excuse me. And a listing of the projects that the county commissioners have adopted throughout Scott County that are on their priority list. You don't happen to see these circles or numbers, Greg?
We're just a little short, I guess. Maybe they're, they're, I'm doing a suicide, this number just didn't slide over.
And the good news on the other piece that was handed out is that they received federal, what they call fastling or tiger monies from the federal government totaling just under $18 million to begin work on the construction of the interchange at US Highway 169 and Truck Highway 41 up the road. And so you can see kind of an overview of what they're going to do, but they were able to obtain the federal funding. And we're very excited about getting that work and you can see what the segment costs are and the project schedule as far as what's going to be occurring. And so I wanted to make sure I brought that information back to you so you could see what scale is up to or what Scott County is up to as part of that. Second piece is trying to take a look ahead is that we're working on assembling the preliminary draft of the 2017 general fund budget. And as part of that, we also do the debt service and estimates for the property tax levy. We're required to adopt a resolution establishing the maximum value for the tax levy and that has to be completed by the end of September. Typically, we've always had ours done at or close to either the first or the second week of September, even though they've expanded the law to take it all the way to the end of the month. The first week is the Cedar Lake arbitration that's going to consume a short week, a holiday week, pretty much every day. And so I would ask for your indulgence not to have to do it during that first week if we can avoid it. I believe Mayor Nicolai is going to be out of the office on vacation the last week in September, if I recall correctly, here.
Yep.
That year gone. And so I, I'd indulge the council in taking a look at it to, since we've moved up our meeting day time to 6:00 PM, it makes it a little difficult to have a special meeting ahead of the regular meeting with everybody's work schedule. And so I'm taking a look at that. I guess I would offer something if it would be with your schedules, the week of the 12th, to maybe meet at 5:30 and to, typically, we've been able to do this in an hour, 90 minutes to just take a look at what's in the preliminary levy. And again, it's kind of the maximum levy. I don't believe, Jenny, you're the only one that hasn't participated in that part of the process. You came in in October last year, by.
I think I came in just at the nick of time for this one.
In the adoption of the preliminary levy?
I think so.
I was thinking, was it September, October, right in there or?
It was right the first week of September, I think.
Then you were here for that piece. But typically, we've brought it in and on the backside, I put a copy of what our levy has been in the general fund, which includes also the contribution of the golf course, the tax abatement piece for chart, our debt service, and the EVA levy. And when you take a look at that, down at the bottom of the change from previous years, the council's been fairly conservative in what we've done in that area. I'm not certain, depending upon what the legislature is going to ultimately do with the LGA. We've got the second half of the police investigator position that's due to come into this year's budget. You've got some of the wages and benefits you have to deal with and that's some other operating costs. So I'm still working on the drafting of that preliminary levy as Patty and I look at the preliminary draft of the budget. So I don't have any numbers to give you at this point in time, but to kind of take a look at that from a big picture. If there's items that we don't have on the list that we need to add in there, the adoption of that levy again is the maximum cannot exceed. As we do the review with you typically in October and November, you take a look at the final draft of the budget through the public hearing process, the first meeting in December, and then adopt the tax levy at the second meeting in December. And so it can only come down as we go through the process. It cannot go up once you adopt the levy to begin with. So the question is, is what do you want to look at for a potential meeting date and what works in most everyone's schedules looking ahead?
We do the Monday, the 12th. What is that?
Yeah, but for me, 12.
Mike, can you confirm though, is, is the 12th when we talk about the levy and we'll actually set it? Or will we talk about kind of the work plan and the priorities or whatever's in it, what's being?
Well, the council has historically, the same night that we talked about it, is that they've typically, historically adopted that preliminary levy.
Right.
It doesn't mean it has to. We have to have it done by September 30th. So we could talk about it, see what's in there. If we needed to make any modifications or changes, we could do that. And then you could adopt the final levy at the September 19th meeting. So you would have the luxury of either doing it that night or deferring that with some additional changes or incorporating something else or doing something differently than what we're looking at, which is why I provided kind of just a historical picture. And Patty tells me that preliminarily, as I take a look at it, debt service is going to be the same, the EVA levy would be the same, the chart tax abatement will be either the same. We'll have to take a look at whether we continue with that depending upon the decision making that we're going to have to do. So we're really down to what's contained in the general fund and/or the golf portion of the levy is really the driving piece of the discussion. So we're not recommending any major significant changes in other parts of that property tax levy.
So what time would be good on the 12th?
I can't make it until the 14th, but I don't have to be here for that, I don't think.
Well, do we want to set a meeting on the 12th to go through it and then adopt it on the 19th? So if Dave does have any questions?
It works for me.
Would that be fine if it comes to me? We can actually?
That's okay with me.
Is that fine with you, Dave?
Yes.
Otherwise, the 14th works for me.
Yeah, otherwise, we can do the 14th after six.
Yeah, I'm free either night.
I'm fine either night as well.
You want to go the 14th?
Yeah, let's do the 14th and then we can get, okay.
And what, what time do you want to start at?
It's not Thursday, so I, we won't go.
I can't do it till after six.
Do you want to do 6:30?
That's okay.
6:30 on the 14th.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you, Mike. Okay, anything else, Mike?
No, that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, Mary Jo?
Nothing.
You been in town all week, hasn't you?
Yeah.
Last couple weeks, okay. Just checking. Sean?
Uh, nothing, except it's funny to see Dave took his calendar off the refrigerator so he could write on it.
That's right.
I've never seen anybody carry a full calendar.
Without this, I'm lost.
Does Kitty know it's gone, missing?
She's the one who gave it to him. She updated everything that was going to be here in temporary, so I wouldn't screw it up.
That's too bad he didn't stop and pick it up when he was walking.